The Charter Township of Brownstown Meeting for September 2nd, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Brinker, please call the roll. Supervisor Breeze?
Here.
Clerk Brinker here. Treasurer Eberth?
Here.
Trustee Allen?
Here.
Trustee Chapman?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Killian?
Here.
You guys think the mic's working this week? It's really different. Next, we have the regular board meeting minutes from August 18th, 2025.
Motion to approve the board minutes from August 18th, 2025.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the agenda approval.
I'd make a motion to press with one addition, which I request to be letter H. Consideration for closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681C to consider collective bargaining negotiations update for the POLC Command Union.
Support.
Motion by Eberth, supported by Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have a public hearing for the amendment of the Downtown Development Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan. May please have a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing for the Downtown Development Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Eberth. Roll call vote, please.
Brinker, yes. Eberth?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes. If anyone would like to come up, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and if you have anything to discuss, you want to talk about how lovely it is outside, come on up. Don't be shy. We don't bite. Come on.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? My name's Phil Barocco. I'm at 22850 Fawn Road in Prairie Creek Subdivision. You're probably all aware of the 440 acres that was up for auction and that's been delayed. I've been in contact with the Michigan Land Conservancy, and they're trying to get grants from different organizations, one of being the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. So, I don't know if you're all familiar with what significance this property is. So, I'm not going to go on and on about that, but I do live in Prairie Creek, and so I've replaced since 2011 six sump pumps. So, I'm not an engineer, I want to say that right up front, but it just, it's a concern of mine that if that property, which is a floodplain, a lakeplain, they call it, gets developed, these little creeks that no one knows are there, like I have a friend in Kerrville, Texas, and we saw what happened there a couple months ago. Suddenly, when you develop property that has native plants that absorb floodwaters, and you have a lakeplain that absorbs water, so you don't know when we get heavy rain what that property does. You will know after it's developed. The first time Baldos Restaurant floods and no one can eat there, then you'll know. So, again, I'm not an engineer, but I'm only going by the fact that where I live, I do know that there's high water table already for the fact that I replaced six sump pumps. So, I wanted to bring that all to your attention. I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but I consider myself a conservationist too. So, the wildlife and that whole habitat, it's very important to me, and as it is, I think, to lots of people. So, I just wanted to voice my concerns about that, and I'm in contact. I'm a business owner. I'm going to try to do a fundraiser to try to help the Michigan Land Conservancy try to raise money so that, they need $6 million. So, that's why they've been in contact with the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, but I'll do what little bit that I can to help. So, thank you for your time.
I live behind you. My sump pumps are lined up along my basement wall. You can add yours to mine.
Well, anybody in the area knows.
No, you're right. I'm not sure what I can say and what I can't say. Mr. Peters, do you have any input? I don't want to disclose anything that I shouldn't.
No, sure. No, just on that topic briefly, we've been certainly in conversations with the Michigan Land Conservancy. We're aware of what they're wanting to do and are talking with them. And as it relates to the public hearing on the DDA plan, that's part of the plan is availability of purchasing land for green space for recreation, as well as addressing stormwater issues.
Thank you.
And that property's in the DDA, of course.
Yes. Anyone else want to come up and say anything? Come on, you all didn't come up here just to watch us. Come on, don't hesitate.
Hi, I'm Therese Barocco. I'm Phil's wife, 22850 Fawn Road in Prairie Creek, and I just want to talk a little more about the prairie and its significance. From what I understand, it's a very rare prairie. There were many prairies like that in Michigan, but that's one of the last ones of its kind. It's some kind of a lakeplain prairie, but I'm not an expert on it, but I have been studying native plants for the last four years since the pandemic, and I think that it would be a good thing to stop that from being developed with more industrial complexes, because like where we live, we're surrounded with them, trucking facilities and car lots all around, you know, the Telegraph, Sibley, King area. So, if we could save that piece of property from development, that would be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Evening, sorry. My name's Cody Clint. I'm at 21369 Black Forest Court, right across the street. Part of the DA, or the DB, sorry, the Downriver Development Authorities.
Yes.
Development Plan is this acreage right here that I believe at one time was classified with some rare frogs or something of that nature at one time. My big concern is, I think a lot of us moved to this area because of the less development in the area, and I would just be very cautious of developing and adding more people into the area, right? I think we've already realized the amount of traffic that is now happening on the West Road. I have a lot of friends that live in the Canton area. If you ever go on Ford Road anytime, at any times, you don't want to go because you can't. And just cautious everybody from continuing to develop because of the tax money associated. We've moved down here for a specific reason. We have great public facilities. We have great natural resources in the area, and I would just very cautious everybody on continuing to develop just for the sake of doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess seeing none, maybe we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Jones, to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public forum. Those of you who would like to come up and discuss anything, you have three minutes to do so, please approach the podium and state your name and address and tell us what's on your mind. Nothing I say will get anyone up here today. No one? Okay, moving on to the agenda, we have approval of extension of four-day work week program.
Motion to approve the four-day work week program.
Motion by Chapman, supported by?
Support.
Jones. Any discussion?
Have we received, I know we've been doing it on an interim basis, any commentary, good or bad, about it from any departments?
Ironically, Friday, I received my first phone call, and it was all good, nothing bad, but a poor guy came up to pay his taxes, and you were not here, Mr. Eberth, to collect that. But no, that's all I've heard. I've heard nothing negative. It's all going well from what I've heard in my office. I don't know about the other people.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any complaints either.
The Treasury Department hasn't received any complaints because they're open longer. Mr. Peters?
Sure, through the chair. So, I have been reaching out to all of our department heads just to see what kind of feedback we've gotten. For the most part, it's sort of what we've expected, where a lot of the contractors appreciate being able to get in early, get permits taken care of. Having it being open slightly later each day has been good for people that work a little bit later and had trouble getting in here when we previously closed at 4:30. Now, they have a little extra time. We haven't really had, the only negative feedback we got really wasn't anything to do with four-day work week. There were other issues. So, we asked, we talked to all our department heads. Even as people came in the building, especially if they came in at a time we weren't previously open, I would ask them, you know, if they had any thoughts on it, and really, all good feedback. I tried to find some negative feedback, and we didn't really receive anything.
Yeah, for the citizens, when we considered this, Mr. Peters and other people, we measured traffic day to day, hour to hour, and found that Fridays were our least busy. And one of the complaints, working parents, they wanted to get in before school started or after. It's hard to do that when you have kids, you're getting to school. Contractors, people doing business. So, opening earlier and staying open later would be the solution, but to keep within budgets, we went to a longer four-day week, and we did that kind of coinciding with our implementation of a lot of things you could do online now. So, you don't even have to come down here for most of the things, but some folks like me, I like going into places. So, that's good. And then we did the trial run. So, we've been doing a trial run to see what happened. So, thank you, Mr. Peters. I just wanted to, I know some of the folks here might not have been here for previous meetings where we discussed this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the letter of agreement with the TPOAM Clerical Labor Union regarding the four-day work week.
Motion to approve the letter of agreement with the TPOA Clerical Labor Union for the four-day work week.
Support.
Support.
Support. Any discussion?
Through the chair. I just wanted to say that I was a little disappointed in the union's refusal to accept the township's offer for some flexibility regarding their scheduled working hours, and I would just ask them to reconsider that position, speak to their members and reconsider it. I support the letter of agreement, but I know there's a little room to tweak it if need be, and I would just ask the union to reconsider their position on that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the TPOAM Administrative Union regarding the four-day week period. This is all the unions within the township, everyone, just so we have a letter of agreement with each union that they accept the four-day week. I'm sorry. Motion for that?
Motion to approve the agreement with the TPOAM Administrative Union.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Killian. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have the letter of agreement with the Brownstown Professional Firefighters Union regarding a four-day work week.
Motion to approve the letter of agreement with the Brownstown Professional Firefighters Union for the four-day work week.
Support. Motion by Chapman, supported by Brinker. Any further discussion? Mr. Peters?
Yes, on this one, I just want to make it clear that just because we're doing a letter of agreement for a four-day work week, that doesn't mean our fire department only works four days a week. This only impacts two people, which are our regular 40-hour positions, the deputy chief and the inspector, and appreciate the chief's work on staggering schedules so that every day is still covered. They will just be working different schedules staggered so that each day's covered, but they'll be able to work a four-day schedule. But the vast majority of firefighters will still be on their seven-day-a-week, 24-hour service to the community.
Thank you for telling us that.
I had that question, but.
Okay, good job, Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under the department reports, we have no reports submitted by the supervisor. For the clerk's office, we have board information.
Reading the file.
Support.
Motion by Allen, supported by Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the treasurer's report. I need a motion to disperse for February 2nd, 2025, $1,244,820.43.
Motion to approve the disbursement of September 2nd, 2025, $1,244,820.43.
Support.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Brinker, yes. Chapman?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes. Next, under Community Services Department, we have the invoice for landmark tree removal on 19750 Dix Toledo Road.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brinker?
Support.
Supported by Killian. Any discussion?
To the chair, this is for the removal of the tree? The one tree that removed it with the approval of site plan?
Mr. Kibbe, welcome, welcome.
It's good evening. This is for the development at 19750 Dix Toledo. It's by B&amp;K Acquisition for the fueling station and drive-through restaurant. There was one landmark tree that was on the site plan to be removed that was forwarded to the board a couple meetings ago by the planning commission at the June 9th meeting, and that is one landmark tree to be removed in conjunction with approved site plan per section 14.02C 7C, and it's tree numbered 1333 on the site plan page LP 1, tree preservation plan, which I think was included for you to review. It looks like it is a tree closest to Dix Toledo, probably about the middle of the development.
So, why did the township have to remove it?
No. They removed it.
Yeah, township's not removing it, just giving it permission to remove it.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And then there's the thing where they have to replace that with somebody tree, right?
Correct.
That's a meatball aside, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, based on that, they'll have their other development plan to include those.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have recreation. No report submitted. Public works, no report submitted. Township manager.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items I wanted to bring up. One, we're continuing through our budget meetings. We recently got all of our budget projections submitted in to the finance department. September 19th is our deadline for departments to submit. Still on schedule, looking at meetings with our departments in October, with the board in October for a tentative budget work session on November 17th, and a tentative public hearing and budget adoption on December 1st. So, not much to report back on, just we're on schedule still, and wanted to make sure you knew that. Secondly, earlier, obviously, we talked a little bit about this, but held our public hearing on the Downtown Development Authority Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan. This is a next step in this long process we've been going through for a while. The next step after this would be to bring, it's actually an ordinance amendment that comes back before the township board. So, there'll be typical process for our ordinance amendment, a first reading, and it'll have to come back, it'll have to be published, and then it'll come back for a second reading, which would just be to adopt the plan. So, still time to read through that, and that'll be presented back to you. Anticipate first reading at our next board meeting. Once those things are in place, then those are between the master plan and the DDA plan. Those are two big steps that it took for us to start implementing some of the things we want to do around the community. And also, since it came up a little bit earlier, I guess I'll add a little more to, you know, the 440 acres that was up for auction. Obviously, it was removed from the auction, and there's been a deal reached with the Michigan Land Conservancy on a purchase option there. I've seen that there is now a website up trying to raise money from the Michigan Land Conservancy. As the board knows, I've been in a number of meetings and conversations with them about what their intentions are, what they need, and those types of things, and at this point, the township continues to meet with them, talk with them. Our conversation all along has been, you know, if what they want to do there is something that's going to be beneficial to our community, we're willing to be part of that. And so, what part of that means is not completely clear yet, but certainly understand the value of that property, understand the difficulty that has been even developing that over the years because of the wetlands, because of the unique habitats that are there. So, we're working with them to see what all they have in mind, what they'd like to see there, and as we have more information, we'll share that back with the board. So, at this point, it's a little early. I know their purchase option gives them until the end of 2026 to get all the money together, but I'm sure we'll be talking more about that property. Another project that I wanted to update everyone on that has been a long time coming, the traffic signal at Van Horn and Arsenal Road is now, intersection's now reopened. It had been shut down to traffic as they did the road improvements. The traffic light is in a four-way flashing mode. I think it's a two-way stop right now, which I think has to stay that way for at least one week. So, I don't exactly know what date they're going to transition that over to a full-service light, but after at least a week, they will transition that light over. It looked like everything's been installed, looks real nice, and so glad to see that project getting done. And certainly, for the people who have to make that turn and it gets a little dangerous from time to time, I'm sure this light will be a welcome safety improvement at that intersection. With that, that's all I had today. Happy to answer any questions.
Through the supervisor. Mr. Peters, about the 440 acres, I know for years, I mean, since you were on the board, we talked about the green belt areas, not just because this is a prairie, but just generally speaking, two things. Green belts such as into subdivisions where there's available property, not to develop it, right? To keep that kind of country look. And I know that's part of the DDA plan. That was one of the themes, that people like how it looks. So, I think not only this, but there will be other areas we should be actively looking for in the DDA and outside of DDA, just we'd have to address how the funding would be, where we could try to do that. And I'm going to repeat this because I want our workers to know this, but when we approve subdivisions, new subdivisions, I'm not a fan, and I know you probably know what I'm going to say, about the landscaping. Problem with some poor citizens will be in homeowners association and be stuck trying to get that done, and it's a nightmare. If they don't, do the bare minimum, right? We're charging them, so we mow, but it's not going to look the way it looks when you buy your house. So, again, I like a more natural, you know, my vision is pine trees, and you come into the subdivision, and there, now you have the houses, everybody can keep their lawns up and look nice, but the entrance should be more natural. And I think in our township, it should be more natural. We know the issues where just the landscaping and keeping it up, and we had the people we've hired the last couple of years have done a good job. I mean, but it is constant. I walk in my door, I pull weeds, they're always pulling weeds. I mean, I see them all the time, and I pull the weeds right, you know, my little section in front of my window, but they do a good job, but it's a big job, and every now and then, something's missed here, and we have to focus on it. But we want to keep it, I think, a more natural, easy to upkeep, and it's consistent, that theme is consistent, what we saw in the open sessions we had with homeowners and citizens that came to those meetings on the DDA plan. You know, we had those questionnaires and those things we did, like what are you looking for? And that was one of the themes, keep that natural look. So, I think it's important about the 440 acres, but it's more than that. It should be a theme, not only in the DDA, but township-wide.
Yeah, and that's a good point, and absolutely, those were themes we heard during the DDA plan process, during our master plan process, and those were reflected in those plans where we look at preserving open spaces, where we look at buffering development, making sure that we're preserving space to keep that kind of aesthetic in our community. So, now that it's in the plans, part of our job and part of what we'll be working with Mark now to do is, how do we translate that into our actual zoning ordinance to make sure when we have a proposal, you know, private property developer has a right to develop their property, but how do we translate that into our zoning ordinance so that we can be friendly, be business-friendly, want to develop the things that we would like, but also preserve what needs to be preserved? And so, that's a tough job, but something that we'll be working on, but obviously, something that are in our plans because that's what residents have been asking for.
And so, for the citizens, so we had to amend our, you know, master plan first. That's a long process, procedures, open meetings and discussions, and the DDA plan, and now we had to do that. So, now we can look at the ordinances and change those so that we're in a better position to do what we're talking about. It's just such a long process because of statutory requirements, but we're getting real close now.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to remind all the residents that this process that we're going through is not going to happen overnight. This is five, 10 years down the line. We're going to start to really see things happen. So, if you think it's going to happen tomorrow, next week, it's not because there's a lot that goes into this. We went through a lot when we were doing the master plan, we got that done, and now this new part, we have it all together now. Now, we just need to implement it, but it's going to take time. So, don't get upset if you see something and say, hey, what's going on over there? And I don't know, and nobody told us, but they're doing something over there. Well, sometimes that's the way it works. They have to move something out the way to see what they're doing to get it all done. As it relates to my neighbor there in Curry Creek, I went through tents, so, I think since 2004. Reason why I went through so many was because I was the only home in the back that there, and all the water was running my way. So, I understand your feeling about it, but I don't think that 500 yards away is going to affect our subsidy. Yeah, I got it, but I want to give you a little bit of insurance that I got a little bit of people that I work with, a couple of engineers who sit on the planning commission as well, they help me and I help them, and we help each other, so that when your questions like that come up, we'll possibly be able to give you an answer later on. We work with a great company, Wade Trum. They give us great information on where we can go and what we can do and what we can't do, and that pushes down to the developer and the site plan. So, keep in mind, it's not going to happen overnight, but it is going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anyone else? I'm going to go through board awareness right now before we call for closed session. Just a reminder, and I'm going to put this first, the community center is closed to the public due to the ongoing renovations. Residents can visit the staff at the event center down King Road, and they are open, same as we are, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 6. And a reminder that the township is now open Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion by Chapman?
Support.
Supported by Brinker, and that is to include a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681C to consider collective bargaining negotiations update for POLC Command Union. Did you catch all that, Sandy? Did you catch all that, Sandy? Okay, so motion by Chapman, supported by Brinker. Roll call vote, please.
Eberth.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Chapman.
Yes.
Burie.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
May I please have a motion to close, uh, to close closed session?
Motion to, motion to close the closed session.
Motion by Allen, supported by Chapman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Jones. Any discussion? Want to stay here five more minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night.